Good evening, everyone. We're gonna get the November 3rd, 7:00 PM regular board meeting to order. Secretary, call the roll, please.
Valencia?
Here.
Cefuentes?
Here.
Reyes?
Here.
LaShay?
Here.
Olivas?
Here.
Moreno?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Public comment? Alright, we have no public comment this evening. We're gonna move on to communications from the superintendent, Dr. Halbertson.
Thank you so much, Board President Cefuentes. First thing we have tonight is 4A Student Board Member Report. So Zian Lalawali, if you could come up for the Student Board Member Report, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank the Board again for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the students. In recent news, our Fall Sports season came to an end, and Tomcats also had many academic opportunities at this time. At our final home football game of the year, our football, cheer, dance, and marching band were all recognized. They had the opportunity to walk with their parents and close friends in honor of their commitment to East Aurora Athletics. Our RTC also held their Navy Night at the game following many of their drill performances of the season. In other sports news, our cross-country team had conference and regional recently. Our runners had a 77% PR rate, and they also had their senior night race at home. Additionally, our golf team scored for the first time at regionals ever, led by senior Rafael Vasquez, who was also named an All-Conference athlete. Our chess team also had their first tournament of the year, placing fourth overall in the five-board section. Our Tomcats were also extremely involved with the college admissions process. We had a record number of students at our fast nights each Thursday, allowing students the opportunity to attend college for much cheaper tuition. Our freshmen also had the opportunity to gain hands-on experience with countless different fields, as the City of Aurora sponsors illuminate hosted by Wabonzi Community College, where they also gained insight into the benefits of pursuing a college education. Students also had visits at NIU and UIC, where they were able to learn firsthand from admissions officers what colleges look for and how to apply. Finally, our students have recently been involved in course selection and also took the pre-ACTs to prepare for future standardized tests and qualify for different scholarships. This has been a great conclusion to our Fall Sports season, and our Tomcats are eager for Winter Sports. Our students are also ramping up as college admissions season approaches, and they're continuing to be prepared and seek out resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Zian. Next, we have 4B Community Relations Report with Ms. Brittany Walker.
Good evening, everyone. As Zian mentioned, we have concluded our Fall Sports, and this evening, we'd like to present some wonderful awards that you see in front of you and recognize one of our inaugural teams. So we're going to start by introducing and having our students, principals, and coaches of Bopri Elementary and Rollins Elementary come to the front. While they come, um... So we just hosted our 5th grade soccer tournament, and our students that are standing before you here are receiving a certificate that says, "In recognition of your teamwork, perseverance, and school pride in presenting both Bopri and Rollins Elementary schools with excellence, your combined efforts and dedication led to an outstanding performance in the District 131 5th Grade Girls Soccer Tournament. Congratulations to the champions." Does someone want to hold this for photo purposes? The pretty big trophy? And I'm actually going to go ahead and take the picture now with the Board, if that's okay? Yes, so you're going to stand in front of the Board of Education? You can hold this one, yes, that's great. And then if someone wants to hold it? The trophy is going to completely cover Dr. Halbertson's stuff. I will make it buried. One, two, three. Congratulations to our girls team. Up next, we have our recognition of Oak Park Elementary School. If you all can come to the front. This is in recognition of your outstanding teamwork, dedication, and sportsmanship in achieving first place in the District 131 5th Grade Boys Soccer Tournament. Congratulations on your well-deserved victory. I have a certificate for you to hold.
Ms. Walker, while you're handing out the certificates, I believe that's back-to-back championships for Oak Park, is that correct? Congratulations, guys.
And for the sake of the Board, maybe I'll wait and do my next recognition, then we can just do one standing, is that okay? So I'm gonna have you all just stand right here on the side, and we're gonna take a picture right after you're on it. So much to celebrate. Sorry about that, everyone. And our last recognition is going to be for our inaugural East Aurora High School Girls Flag Football Team. Give it up. So this was our first year hosting a team for Girls Flag Football. This is in recognition of your dedication, teamwork, pioneering spirit of the first official IHSA-recognized flag football team in East Aurora history. Your commitment and passion have paved the way for future Tomcats, set the foundation for continued growth and success in the new athletic tradition. So please, may I have all the students from the Flag Football Team come on up? And coaches.
Yes, thank you.
Alright. We're going to have, go ahead and have the Board take a picture, sorry about that, and then we're going to get your picture right after, okay? Actually, I don't want them standing and sitting again and again. I'm going to have you all. Herd around this way, Flag Football. Herd around a little bit more. Thank you. I'll get you guys, I promise. Board, I see you. Perfect. Thank you, Board. Stay put. Thank you, inaugural football team. Flag Football. You're gonna have you all come on. Oh, I'm gonna give you your... Take it back to the school. I'm gonna have you stand right in front here. Who's got the big trophy, right in the middle? Ready? That is the audience. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you to all of our student athletes.
And we can take a brief recess. If the sports teams do want to take off, we know that it's a school evening, and we've got school tomorrow, so Girls Flag Football and soccer teams, you guys are welcome to stay if you want to, but we'll pause for about two minutes. And if you want to take off for the evening, please feel free. Once again, congratulations to all those teams for their awesome achievements this fall.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Alright, and we'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and re... I think so. Test, test?
Alright, we're gonna...
We'll go ahead and reconvene the board meeting. Thank you very much, and once again, congratulations to those teams. Next, on our docket, we have Item 4C, District Updates, and we have 4C1, which is the IASB Resolutions, and Board Vice President Saul Alivas will take us through the resolutions for the upcoming Triple I Conference and the resolutions that are there.
Thank you. I'm gonna apologize upfront for this long summary. But this is the summary of the 10 proposed Do-Adapt Constitutional Amendments in the Illinois Association of School Boards 2025 Resolution Committee Report. There is also one that I forgot to include in the email, but it was in the packet. The first one, there's the adoption of school bus safety funding. This pretty much gives a recommendation to urge the Illinois General Assembly and the Governor to enact legislation that establishes dedicated school bus safety equipment grant within the State Board Education Transportation Line, creates a small district waiver that extends the compliance deadline to July 1st of 2034, authorizes qualifying district to use transportation funds proceeds to or revolving lease agreements for the local costs here without counting against the district's status death limit, and directs the Illinois Department of Transportation to approve alternate research-based recurrent protection technologies that may offer equal or greater safety at lower cost, giving district flexibility to comply. So I would just like to request a consent from the Board if they agree based on this resolution for the school bus safety funding.
Yes, on my end.
Yes.
Alright. The next one is Item 1, Article 2, Membership Rewritten. This amendment rewrites the Article 2 to consolidate the general eligibility language for all membership classes and clear specify which classes are eligible to hold office or vote in the Delegate Assembly. And I'm gonna ask for a consent on adopt. Can I get a consent?
Consent.
Item 2, Article 3, Delegate Assembly Annual Conference, Section 2, Delegate Assembly. This amendment clarifies that the Delegate Assembly meets at least annually, and voting may be done in person or by alternate methods recommended by the Resolution Committee and approved by the Board. I'm gonna ask for a consent.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, Item 3, Article 4, Election, Section 1, Nomination. This amendment aligns the nomination process with current practices by requiring nomination from the nominating committee, distributed 45 days ahead of the annual meeting, and by allowing additional nominations from the floor with written consent of the nominee. Can I get a consent?
Consent.
Yes.
Consent.
Alright, Item 4, Article 4, Election, Section 2, Terms of Office. This amendment changes the term of elective office to two-year rather than one, and clarifies they may serve no more than one consecutive term, promoting constituency and consistency on leadership. Can I please get a consent? And again, this is going to be at the IASB level. Item 5, Article 5, Board Directors, Section 2, Composition. This amendment updates the composition of the Board of Directors by removing reference to National School Board Federation since IASB left that body, ensuring that structure aligns with current practices. Can I please get a consent?
Consent.
Yes. Alright, Item 6, Article 7, Committee, Section 3, Nominating Committee. This amendment formalizes that the immediate past president chair, the nominating committee, and that the committee consists of four additional Board of Directors members, aligning the Constitution with IASB's current government's practice. Can I please get a consent?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, Item 7, Article 8, Division, Section 4, Officers. This amendment asks a requirement that division governing committees or boards elect a director to the association board, and that the officer of division must take training within 60 days after election, enhancing clarity around roles and accountability.
Yes.
Yes. Item 8, Article 9, Resolution Rewritten. This amendment rewrites Article 9 to streamline the resolution process, clarifying who may propose resolutions, establish the reviewing timeline, and appeal protocol, and align the constitutional language with current practices in IASB advocacy. Yeah.
Yes.
Item 9, Article 11, Miscellaneous, Section 7, Declare Emergencies. This amendment creates a new section, giving the Board of Directors authority to suspend or modify provisions of the Constitution during declared emergencies subject to a majority vote of the Board, a modernization reflecting recent experiences.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And the last one, Item 10, Article 12, Amendment, Section 2, Proposals. This amendment clarifies the process by which constitutional amendments may be proposed, requiring a majority vote of the supporting entity, active members, division, or Board of Directors, submission at least 105 days prior to the Delegate Assembly and distribution of to active members at least 45 days ahead.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
And that was just a brief summary, so thank you.
Thank you, Board Vice President Alivas. Next, we have Item 4 C, 4C2, and this is with Dr. Amy Angle. She's going to provide us an update on our Illinois School Report Cards, as that information was embargoed until recently, and that was last Thursday it came out. So we wanted to provide a brief overview, and then we'll have some additional information at upcoming board meetings as well.
Thank you very much. Annually, the Illinois State Board of Education releases the Illinois School Report Card data in October, based on the prior year's assessment. So this is all based on our spring assessment data. I wanted to start with helping a little bit of framing of the Illinois School Report Card in general. The School Report Card really helps provide some clear metrics on what our schools are being measured on. So you can see the list on this slide deck there. It's an opportunity to provide some transparent, data-informed updates to the community and to the Board of Education, so that everyone's aware of the status of the schools and how they're performing. This data helps us understand how our students are performing across key indicators. It identifies strengths, patterns, and opportunities for growth, and it allows us to connect our results with our ongoing work within the schools and the district improvement work. On the next slide, you'll see that there are five designations in the state of Illinois. The designations are calculated based on your overall school performance, but also the subgroup performance. Subgroups include English learners, children with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, and then students from different race and ethnic backgrounds. The performance and growth for each subgroup factor into that overall accountability for each school, and if there is a subgroup below the state thresholds, that can impact a school's designation. So it's a little bit about those designations. Here's a glimpse at our district performance. You can see here a chart that demonstrates both this year and last year's data. Last year's data is shown in black on the chart, and this year's data is shown in red. This year, just like last year, we have a school labeled as exemplary. We have 10 schools labeled as commendable, both in 2024 and in 2025. Last year, we had five schools labeled as targeted. This year, we have seven schools labeled as targeted. Last year, we had two schools labeled as comprehensive needs, and this year, we have zero labeled as comprehensive needs. ISB uses specific calculations to determine the school performance. Each school is then labeled with a status. Here, you can see our specific schools and where they rank based on school performance levels. We have some celebrations in this data. Fred Rogers Magnet Academy moved up to exemplary. So that was a big celebration. That's right. We have no schools in the comprehensive status, and in fact, two of our schools in comprehensive moved up and out of that category. So it's a celebration that Rollins moved up from comprehensive to commendable. Mm-hmm. Oak Park moved from targeted to commendable. And Allen moved from comprehensive to targeted. We have a few other differences between this year's school performance levels and last year's. One is Johnson Elementary. They moved from exemplary to commendable, but do not jump to any conclusions as to the high-quality performance of the school. They'll be exploring their math growth data specifically in order to determine next steps to take the title back from or share the title with Firma. Both Cowherd and Simmons Middle School moved from commendable to targeted. They're specifically going to be exploring their attendance, their math and ELA growth data, and then that CWD subgroup data. And then all our other schools remain stable, but have a lot of continued focus and work to do on both attainment and growth in literacy and math, focusing also on our attendance and belonging. What does all this mean? What do the results mean? Data is really just one way to help us understand what's going on in our schools. The real work is looking at the patterns year over year and identifying any trends and areas to continue to review. We, as a district and in each of our individual schools, have done a lot of work to really engage as a staff, so that that school improvement process isn't just a document on paper. It's not something that they come up and talk about once a year. It's something that they're actually living, breathing, and working with, and it's actually owned by everybody in the building. So that's a pretty exciting process. Everybody is consistently discussing what those targets are, what's being done, how it's being measured, and whether their initial plans align with where they need to go now that they have new, fresh data to take a look at. So what are our next steps? Our next steps would be that we would continue to engage in that continuous school improvement process. The teams are gonna go back, take a look at the data, take a look at their school improvement plans. They had goals set aside, and if those goals no longer align with what the data says they should be working on, they're going to make some shifts. And then they're going to use that data to really hone in on where the needs are, so that they can focus on continuous growth and improvement. And then on the district end, our school leadership team, our curriculum instruction team, our student services team, HR, finance, ops, all of the teams come together to support the work of the building leaders based on what they need from us. So what questions can I ask or can I answer on behalf of the team? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Angle. Next, we're gonna move to Item 4C3, which is the Motion to Approve the Intergovernmental Agreements Between SASED and East Aurora School District 131. And this is more of a housekeeping thing, but due to the educational needs of two students with visual impairments, the district has determined that the special education co-op, SASED, is the most appropriate placement for their services. As part of SASED's annual placement process, non-member districts are required to complete an intergovernmental agreement. The IGA outlines the responsibilities, financial commitments, and legal obligations between the home district and the cooperative.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
Valencia?
Yes.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Thank you, and I've got a couple other just updates for the Board real quick and the community at large. First thing is, we have a job fair upcoming, so we are pleased to announce our upcoming job fair, scheduled for November 19th at 4:00 PM in the boardroom. We will be inviting our current student teachers and reaching out to local universities to connect with December graduates. This is done in order to enhance our outreach. We'll have a flyer distributed and create digital event announcements as well. Our objective for this is to fill open and hard-to-fill positions, both certified and classified, for this academic school year, and if feasible, for the 2026-2027 school year. We are also prepared to assist any interested candidates in obtaining an emergency LBS-1 endorsement. Furthermore, we intend to host another local job fair in the spring to continue with our recruitment efforts. So this is another added layer to our recruitment efforts out of the HR or Staff Services Department. Next, Dr. Angle touched on this briefly a little bit, and we just talked about school improvement plans and how it's important to have those tied to our data when it comes out. I wanted to provide the Board a brief update. We have departmental improvement plans, and these have been ongoing this year, and we are gonna take the opportunity to present these departmental improvement plans. We're excited to announce that we will be presenting departmental improvement plans to the Board of Education. This will be done during the communication with the superintendent portion of the board meeting. This brief presentation, and I do stress "brief" for some of our executive cabinet members, will highlight the work that each department is doing to meet the needs of the district as a whole. The Finance Department will be presenting on Monday, November 17th, and we'll have each department plan, we'll have department improvement plans approximately once per month for this. These plans, along with our school improvement plans, will help us assist as we look to update our five-year strategic plan during the 2026 calendar year. And then finally, this Saturday, November 8th, we have our annual, Sixth Annual Parent University. This is Saturday, November 8th, from 8:00 AM till 12:00 PM. It's at East Aurora High School at 500 Tomcat Lane. This conference is dedicated to East Aurora District 131 Parents and Guardians, and it'll cover a variety of topics from birth to college. There will be English and Spanish sessions. If you have questions, please contact your school's parent liaison or Melissa Diaz. We'd be happy to help. Just some of the highlights, we do have daycare provided on-site, so it'll be right there at East Aurora High School, so you don't have to travel back and forth from gates, and we'll also have breakfast and lunch provided. And in addition, our keynote speaker is the Illinois Educator of the Year, who just took that crown earlier this year, so he'll be presenting to us based off of his real-life experiences and how he became an educator, and how important it was to have those educators in the room with him. So very excited for that opportunity this Saturday, so please make sure you advertise it. Board members, if you want to stop by, we'd love to see you there as well. And those are all the announcements I have. Next, we'll move on to Item 5, Motion to Approve the Following Consent Agenda Items with Board President Cefuentes.
Alright, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Motion to approve the following Consent Agenda as listed. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Alright, moving on to Section 6, Finance and Personnel Committee with Ms. Reyes.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. The Finance and Personnel Committee met earlier today at 5:30 here at DAC, and I will have a report at the next board meeting. For now, we do have a couple of action items. Motion to adopt the proposed 2025 Certificate of Tax Levy and Related Board Resolutions as presented.
So moved.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
Valencia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
6.2, Motion to Approve the Resolution Abating the Taxes Here To For Leaved For the Year 2025 To Pay Debt Service On The Series 2016-B And Series 2020-C Alternate Bonds.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? I have a quick question. So how much are we abating? Okay, well, that's sort of what we did last year, so similar. Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
6. B. Point 3, motion to approve the resolution abating a portion of the tax heretofore levied for the year 2025 to pay debt service on the general obligation refunding school bonds, Series 2020B.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
De Fuentes?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
6. B. Point 4, motion to approve the following insurance program renewals as presented by Hub International for the 2026 school calendar year.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
LaShay?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
De Fuentes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
The next Finance Personnel Committee meeting will take place December 1st, 2025, at 5:30 here at the Administrative Center. And that concludes my report.
All right, moving on to Curriculum and Programs Committee with Mr. Olivas.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and yield my time to Ms. Valencia to give the report.
Buenas tardes a todos. Good evening, everyone. During our last curriculum committee meeting on October 20th at 6:00 PM, Walter Arnellas and Stephanie Schmizing, along with her team, came to present to us their school improvement plan for Allen and Rollins Elementary Schools. Mr. Arnellas began his presentation in Spanish, which threw us all for a loop since we were accustomed to hearing these plans in English. However, after reading Allen's vision statement in Spanish, he switched to English and reread Allen's vision statement. The team provided us with information about the students' proficiency, and they identified a desire to focus on literacy, meeting or exceeding grade level expectations by 6% across all reported groups. They provided us with some key action they were looking forward to implementing to achieve their goals. The Allen Elementary School team also informed us they would be focusing on numeracy and culture for belonging. The goal for numeracy was also to have a 6% increase of students who meet or exceed grade level expectations. The goal for culture and belonging is to decrease chronic absenteeism for its current 29% down to 19%. The team presented us with key actions for both goals. Mrs. Schmizing kept her presentation in English. The Rollins principal reviewed their school's vision statement, and the team also discussed their key actions to help meet their literacy, numeracy, and culture for belonging goals. The Rollins Elementary School team also set a goal to increase the percentage of students meeting or exceeding in literacy and mathematics by 6% across all reported demographics. Their culture and belonging goal is one that I hope all schools can adopt. 100% of all students will be intentionally connected to a trusted adult through a documented check-in system. They stressed that belonging is directly tied to attendance, engagement, SEL, and academic achievement. We proceeded to review the MAPF benchmark. Dr. Amy Engel provided us with easy-to-read charts representing the percent of students in each achievement quintile by grade level. The charts also compared the percentage of students in the high and high-average achievement levels from this school year to last school year by grade level. The subjects compared were both reading and math. With the charts, we were able to visually see growth in many cohorts in the same grade compared to last school year's cohort. In some circumstances, the improvement was the same or an area for growth. Lastly, there was a request to dispose of chemicals that are irrelevant to the curriculum or expired from East Aurora High School and dispose not salvageable instruments from Walden Middle School. These are both actionable items. Dr. Amy Engel notified us the materials received over the summer have been distributed throughout the schools. She also mentioned a pause in disposing of FNP material while the new literacy implementation is monitored. In addition, we received an update of the enrollment and attendance. The meeting adjourned at 6:39 PM. The next curriculum meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 27th at 6:00 PM. So, motion to approve item 7. B. Point 1, the resolution for disposal of personal property, chemical supplies.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
De Fuentes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
And motion to approve item 7. B. Point 2, the resolution for disposal of personal property, the instruments.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
Reyes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
De Fuentes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
And with that, we conclude our report.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Building and Grounds with Mr. LaShay.
Thank you. We had a Buildings and Grounds meeting tonight at 6 o'clock. Our next meeting is Monday, December 1st, right here at 6 o'clock. We'll have a report then. But we do have two action items. The first is 8. A. Point 1, oops, let's see, no. 8. B. Point 1, motion to approve the purchase of playground equipment, play surfaces for Gate School, Beneviti Steam Academy, and Krug School from Game Time Inc. in the amount of $375,466.97.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Hearing none. Secretary, call the roll, please.
Valencia?
Yes.
De Fuentes?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
And lastly, 8. B. Point 2, motion to reject the bid to replace the gutters at Oak Park School. We're going to go, Andy's going to modify it. We're going to maybe go out to bid in the spring or when the weather is.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
De Fuentes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Next meeting is Monday, December 1st, 6 o'clock. Back to you, President Sefantis.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, now going into executive session for the purpose of discussing student discipline and the appointment, employment, performance, compensation, and dismissal of a specific employee.
So moved.
Second. And potential litigation.
So moved.
Secretary, call the roll, please.
Reyes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
De Fuentes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
All right, motion to reconvene from executive session.
The move.
Tackett.
Secretary, call the roll please.
Pashi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Secretary, call the roll please.
Valencia?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Lote?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Before I end this, of greeting.